You've had the same opportunity as anyone else to come in and work with us. And you chose not to.
Usually I shut around and have a workshop dedicated to the public.
Can I finish?
To come in and act.
So you've had just as much time as anyone, the opportunity to come in and work with this program as anyone else has had. And you come to the meetings and you create this chaos.
I'm not creating any chaos.
All this disturbance.
Otter Creek called a special meeting to go over their fiscal budget for the year. There aren't a lot of timelines and they're way behind because Russ the Sus had town hall shut down for months on end. And now everybody shows up and they think it's going to be a five, maybe a 10 minute meeting. Ooh, but Don the Con has another plan. He wants to disrupt. He wants chaos all the time. I don't know if this man is just mental in the head, if something's affecting him in his brain, who knows? But it gets off track again. And after the meeting, there's another secret meeting between Lynette, John Crook, and Russ the Sus out in the parking lot. Don gets in on that too. You want to know what they said? Well, here it is.
We're all gonna die of a disease called liabides. I know I posted a huge four by eight sign in my front yard and posted all over Facebook and all over the town that you're corrupt, but we need you to save us, Russ the Sus.
Did your plumber call me personally? Well, quiet, someone's coming. It's Don. He is not corrupt, but Jeremy's two inch pipe is.
Those scenes were after the meeting. Funny how during the meeting, Lynette actually wore a mask. Now, there was about 10 people in the attendance of this meeting in the crowd. Now Lynette has lied so much that she now has to live out her lie while she's with a crowd of people with cameras on. But she didn't know the camera was on here. So during the meeting, Lynette had a mask on. Not that it really matters. She's never worn a mask before. But every time we called her out on something, she then tries to correct it or tries to live out her lie because the camera's gonna be on. And yeah, some cameras caught her in a mask inside the room. But she takes the mask off and then she goes out and she's with Russ the Sus and John Crook, who she says is dying of septic of the brain. And yet he's fine. He's right there. Now remember, they wear masks everywhere and they're always six foot apart from people outside because their daughter has a life threatening disease. So let me clarify this. Number one, she's a pathological liar. And she's not six feet apart from John, who's so infected right now, living in a camper that she has to live in a shed with a child, which is so wrong on every level. And why CPS has not interfered and actually helped this child is beyond me. But I digress. She's not six feet apart from Russell. Neither is John Crook, right? We can see that very clearly. Mask isn't on either. Another question, if John Crook is the only one who can actually watch the child, which she calls him an absolute abuser, then where is the child? Now I think the answer is pretty obvious. The child is probably in the car. And that's probably okay in this situation. If she wasn't telling the entire world that he's an alcoholic abuser. That's not okay by any stretch of the imagination. And let's not forget, they actually posted signs, a four foot by eight foot sign in the turtle sanctuary, if you can call it that. Tortoise rescue, if you can call it that. The 501(c)(3), which is a tax status, which means they're nonprofit. Nonprofit is not a business plan. It is a tax status. You can make profit. You're supposed to make profit. You can't operate a business without making profit. Except Lynette says they have no money whatsoever. They have no money even to feed themselves. But here they are. They're driving a brand new Gladiator, which they are in debt for. Living in a camper that they're in debt for. Trying to build a house that they're in debt for, that they can't finish. They're living on the property illegally. And on the property, the 501(c)(3), the nonprofit sanctuary for tortoises and reptiles and birds and everything else she's posted, they have a sign up there. Russell is corrupt. They've posted signs at the post office. Russell is corrupt. They've posted both of them all over Facebook. Russell is corrupt and Mary. And now all of a sudden, who's buddying up to Russ the Sus in a desperate attempt to save them? They're illegally living on the property. They're illegally having animals on the property. Based on Levy County statutes, they cannot be within a quarter of a mile of any residents with this nonprofit rescue. They know their time is almost up. Their days are numbered and I'm coming for them and I will not let up until these two con artists and scammers are gone and that the baby is safe, the animals are safe, and the town is safe from these two. Everybody was thinking, well, okay, everybody was hoping Russ the Sus wouldn't show up again. And here we go. He's back. Now you notice his face isn't as red in this meeting. I wonder why? Because I'm not there in person. So this is pre-recorded and there are captions for you. We also had some help from a viewer to try and increase the volume. Now when we increased the volume on the device that the actual recording was taking from, that recording gets a lot of other volume and issues with it as well. So it may be difficult to hear on some levels, but you can always read the transcript, which is actually kind of funny because it's auto-generated and it's not always what they're exactly saying. The best way to listen is to actually get earphones and get the most current device you have so that that current device can actually play the audio levels that were recorded on a more current device. Is it just me or is there a little tension in the room? I mean, I'm not even there and there's tension in the room. The reason why I'm not there is, let's be honest, I've not been home for the entirety of the summer so far. It's exhausting spending tens of thousands of dollars flying back and forth, black and forth, back and forth for accountability in this town. The town's in good hands with Madam Mayor Therese, no doubt whatsoever. And Vice Mayor Zim is doing an incredible job as well. And the townspeople are rallying around and helping one another. And yeah, they're fighting the corruption without me. They never needed me in the first place. They maybe just needed a little bit of a oomph to say, hey, you can do this and this can change. But we didn't need to be there. George and I will be there, right? Next month?
For August meeting.
Okay, so we will be there next month, but it's time for me to actually spend some time in my own home where I belong. And we'll get there again, next month's meeting, and then we'll be there all winter long again.
Ready to make a chief?
Really? It's four minutes to stop. Four minutes to stop. And then a little while ago, the sun popped out. I thought we could hear them just.
I'm ready to go already. That's just that way it went.
Lynette with liabides, living out her lie because we've called her out on it on the last meeting. Listen, she's never come to the meetings wearing a mask except for one time when she knew everybody would be recording and she was the magical clerk for Russ the Sus. I volunteered to take minutes, which were a joke and incorrect and wrong. So since we call her out, this is the same as we call out all the garbage on the property. Oh, now they scramble to clean up the garbage because all the agencies are coming. This is the same as we call out the open freezer on the property, death trap for the child. Oh, all of a sudden they scramble to get a metal scrapper to remove it. Why isn't any of this happening beforehand? They scramble to take care of the turtles once fish and wildlife are out there. Why didn't they do it in the first place? They don't do anything unless we actually draw attention to it. And then they know the agencies are coming. So we've contacted CPS, we've contacted IRS, we've contacted the state attorney, we've contacted the county, we've contacted the town, we've contacted Fish and Wildlife, we've contacted, I mean, the list goes on and on. What was that, George? George is whispering. I have no idea what she's whispering.
I said, we've contacted Winn-Dixie.
Okay, yes, Winn-Dixie for that scam as well. You know, I'd say it's about time we actually just reveal the entire scam on all the Facebook pages that they're on too. Begging, non-stop. We have life threatening diseases. Our turtles have life threatening diseases. We have life threatening diseases. I'm dying. He's dying. I have disabilities. I can't, my back is all degenerated disc. I can't stand, I can't walk and yet I still do. The scams go on and on. It is horrific. It is pathetic. Soliciting all these things, professionally begging and scamming. And the funny thing is, it's not even professional. They suck at it. They're horrible at it. And we're tired of it. And the town is tired of them. Madam Mayor Therese is waiting for seven o'clock. They officially have to start at seven. They can't start before seven. Again, very few people in the crowd. This is a special meeting. Per the sunshine law, they have to give, well, they want to really give 72 hours for a special meeting. And Madam Mayor Therese gave well more than 72 hours of notice for this meeting. Even though there's only about 10 people in the crowd, this is supposed to be a five minute meeting. Let's vote on this and this and let's get out and we'll handle everything at the next monthly meeting. But per the usual, that's not what Don wants to do here today. You probably noticed the microphone system isn't hooked up and there's a reason for it. Again, they were only coming in to see two things, talk about two things. This meeting should have been under five minutes. Honestly, they should have waited, been sitting, waiting longer for the meeting to start than the meeting actually took place. Again, a little foreshadowing, there's gonna be a little bit of a fight breaking out with Don.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Finally, let's get this party started.
All right, so tonight we're just talking about our proposed millage and the budget. It's gonna be a real quick meeting.
Trim's a new term for me and it may be a new term for you. We're not talking house construction and trimming everything out. It stands for truth and knowledge in millage. You're going millage, okay? I understand truth. Lynette doesn't. Otter Creek, most of the people in the past on the council don't. Knowledge, well, we finally have a mayor that actually is transparent and shares knowledge with us and in millage. Okay, so basically in a nutshell, this is what it is. It's the percentage that you're being taxed in the, well, I was gonna say city, but it's not a city, it's a town. We have 100 people. It's a town, okay? So really what they have to set is the tax rate for the people. And the council is responsible for that. Now remember, the council's responsible for a ton of things. But this is one thing that has a timeline that is very, very coming up quick. And therefore a special meeting has to be put in place. And therefore they have to say, okay, this is what we need to do. We have to set this now, but it can be adjusted later as you will see. So all of this is about setting a tax rate for the people in the town. Has nothing to do with the people outside of the town, which we'll talk about later. But this is what the people in the town are gonna pay for taxes. And you would think we're paying so many taxes, we would have great water and we'd have great services like police, fire, and anything else we need. Dog catchers, code enforcement, and the list could go on and on, right? But no, they would never be able to pay enough money to provide all the services that the town legally should be providing.
So the proposed rate that we're looking to go with, and it can go down from here where we have our official meeting in September, but things have to be entered into the computer by the fourth. And once you enter something in, you can't go up, you can only go down. So the proposed rate we're gonna go with is 7.8669.
Just in case you didn't hear the mayor, what she said is, we have to have this millage rate or this trim rate inputted into the system by the fourth. Now the next meeting is past the fourth, which is why they need the special meeting now. And she said, we're gonna go with this rate, 7.8 number, 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 number. Let's just, for our sake, let's round up 7.9, right? That would be the tax rate, 7.9%. And she's saying, we can't go up once it's entered in the system, but we can take it down. In September, we can solidify it and we can take it down, but it has to be inputted. Something has to be in the system by the fourth. So let's go with this number, 7.8 da-da-da-da-da-da-da. And then if we want to take it down, we can, but we can't increase it. That's exactly what she's saying and telling everybody right now. Which by the way, this is the exact same thing and the exact same rate they've used in the past.
Anybody want a second there?
A second. So the proposed 7.8669.
All in favor? Don? Some unanimous for the 7.8669?
Unanimous vote. Now it took some pulling of teeth to get that second motion so that it could get to a vote and then unanimously passed, but it did. So that was roughly 56 seconds. The second thing should have been just as easy, except it just never seems to be with Don around.
And then if you look at the proposed budget for '23, '24.
How did this budget come about? That's the budget. We worked that budget out. Sometimes you need to have shots of the workshops to, so we can all kind of have some input on that. Because some of these things are like 1,000% or 20% more, 200% more, 25% more, 10% more, 30%. Three things.
They're prepared in a mess.
Pardon?
They're prepared in the past.
We usually have workshops and we would.
And what month did you have workshops?
Here we go with Don again. Okay, in the past, we had workshops to work through this. Okay, just weeks ago in the other meeting, you said workshops aren't required. And the mayor told you, you either do your job or you get out. As a matter of fact, you told the mayor you would come in and you would go to a workshop and you'd look through all the resumes, not applications, resumes of the potential clerks. And you didn't. As a matter of fact, another council member had to come and get you and bring you and make you come. That's pretty sad. That's pretty pathetic. And now you don't come to the workshops. Now you're complaining that there wasn't a workshop for you to actually be there to work on the budget. What does it matter? You wouldn't have shown up anyway. Oh, how do I know? Because you didn't. They workshopped this every single day of every single week since the last meeting and you've attended nothing but one where another council member picked you up and brought you and made you look at actual applications. But it's an issue for you, right? Are you mentally capable for this position? Let me even go back. Do you even have the qualifications? So as we've shared in the past, Don has two charges, 1982, 1987, of possession of controlled substances. That would be a felony in Florida. And we are in that process right now with the elections board, trying to figure out what route we go to remove Don from the board in regards to these charges. So what we know so far is if you have a felony in the town of Otter Creek, no. You should not be able to serve legally on the town council, regardless of another amendment that came up in 2018. You should not be able or qualified to serve on the council. That's where we're at right now. So I know the town's working with the state attorney and the attorney general and we're trying to work with the board elections to figure out the resolution and honestly, to remove Don for good.
It seems like the council should have some sort of input on these numbers, especially when they vary so greatly.
There has been ongoing workshops on all these things because we are so far behind and getting called up.
You said we have to. So not have us have some input on this.
Do you want to worry about workshops going on in place?
All I'd say is I think we should all have some input on these numbers.
Absolutely, sure.
You know, 200% here. I don't want to repeat myself. 1,000%. 1,000% right there.
I constantly invite people to the workshops that are taking what's going on.
Don, which one are you referring to?
You're probably thinking, Don's doing this on purpose just to get Madam Mayor Therese off a rocker, to try and entice her to say something or do something that I would do. And let me share this openly with you. She's a better person for the mayorship than I would ever be because I would have already jumped across the table and I would have shown Don the way out the door. Because he's had every opportunity to come to every single workshop and work on these things. So he's gonna complain if he comes to the workshop. He's gonna complain if there is a workshop. He's gonna complain if there's not a workshop. He's gonna complain if he's not invited to a workshop. He's gonna complain about everything. And you're thinking, well, he's only doing this to Madam Mayor Therese. No, he did this to Russell. Him and Russell, same thing. As a matter of fact, there are emails that Don's already been told about that Mary and Russell intentionally, corruptly tried to keep Don away and not let him come to a special meeting because they know Don does this and they know Don would flip things up on its side and they know that Don is this way. So this isn't a Madam Mayor Therese thing. This is a 100% Don thing. I don't think he's right in the head, honestly. I don't think he's right in any manner whatsoever. I don't think he should be in this capacity. He's done this to Russell and honestly, why he was doing it to Russell, we're like, yeah, 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 fight him, Russell, or fight him, Don. We want the transparency. We want to know what's going on. Now the transparency is there and he's fighting for the sake of just fighting. How must this man's woman feel in the house? This is insanity. There is something way, way, way wrong with Don the Con.
Are you talking about the anticipated income and the spending for the fiscal year? Yeah. Okay. The budget that we were talking about is your millage budget. That's the one we've got to post and that's one we're using the 7.8669. That was the one. We haven't gotten to the other one yet.
And we have all the way until the next council meeting to finalize, we have all the way until next council meeting to finalize this budget so we can have our plans submitted for, so we have the option of adjusting this rate.
Now, this is not the final.
I watched both of those.
But you have to start some way to increase it.
Well, I think we should have started with the.
The finals in September.
With the workshops so we can all have some sort of input into that.
Now, the actual amount is what has been spent up until we walked in last month. That's what had already been spent.
Let me put this in layman terms for you. Let me put it on the bottom shelf for all of us. Let's reach these cookies. So Don's looking at papers. He doesn't like the numbers. They seem inflated. They seem big. And then Belinda goes, this is the money that's already been spent. Who was the mayor why that money was being spent? Layman terms, bottom shelf, ready for the cookie? This is how Russ the Sus has bankrupt your town, Don. Don't look at Madam Mayor Therese and then go, this is your fault. No, this is your fault, Russ the Sus. And Don, it's your fault because you were on the council and you didn't help hold him accountable to anything whatsoever.
We're talking about the future, right? '24, start sending, when's the fiscal year start?
September. So which one were you referring to?
The computer repair support. It went from 130 bucks to $1,100.
We are going to have to have, well, we have to, we're gonna have to have the next one computer that we're operating on is gonna have to pay things. It's gonna, we're gonna have to go and do some backup that's gonna cost us. The initial hard rocks out of the old equipment that we just closed up didn't cost us anything. Charlie was not enough to come and do that for us. Now anything going forward, we're gonna have to pay for.
Layman terms again. You weren't doing what you were supposed to be doing as a town under Russ the Sus. And Mary, Mary, jail's gonna be scary. Period. Now we actually have to do the things that we're legally mandated to do and we have to have the equipment to actually do the things that we legally have to do and therefore we have to pay for it. We don't just give money out for three different clerks that did nothing and have no work to show for it anymore. We actually have to function as a town or we unincorporate. And we'll talk about unincorporating here in just a little bit.
Well, we have to pay for everything.
Right, I know, but I mean, do you want to cut it? Because if we cut it.
I'm just.
Well, I mean, if you're.
I think it's awful strange for a thousand percent increase in one budget item.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I've had a chance to study this or anything, but that's my feeling.
Yes, sir. And that's one thing. And we have to look at the cost of the hourly fee that's gonna be charged for us. In the past, the computer rate was probably just an upgraded software that you got. Now we're actually gonna have to repair something. And we also have to do the.
I always have all these expenses.
We're going to a website as well and we're trying to get things done that we are required to do.
Well, I think if you really read the charter, we're probably going above and beyond what should be done.
I just have to shake my head in disbelief. If you read the charter, we're going above and beyond what should be done. Okay, so some of you may not know what a charter is. The town charter, think of it as bylaws. You may not know what bylaws are either. Let me simplify it for you. It's the laws or it's not even laws. It's policies that govern how the actual town operates, okay? They're internal policies. Think about it where you work, your place of business has policies. Now Don's going, well, our charter doesn't require this. First of all, do you ever think Don actually read the charter? I have it. I seriously doubt Don's ever read it because I've never heard him quote it. Now, secondly, you've got outside influences. When you're a town, you have to do these legal mandated things from the federal government. What does that have to do with your town charter? Nothing. From the state government, what does that have to do with your town? charter? Nothing. From the county government, what does that have to do with your town charter? Nothing, nothing. The charter means very little in regards to the laws that they have to apply and abide by.
You know, like, total expenses, it's like, more than 20% from one year to the next.
Well, I mean, where do you wanna cut? Where do you wanna cut? Because right now, what you see is...
Well, you know, I walk in here and get handed these, and now that you're asking where I wanna cut. You just can't make these arbitrary decisions, and then, you know, they want me to come up with some numbers, I need some little numbers, I want some kind of background on.
The purpose of just being here today is that you've got a whole month, or three weeks until the next meeting, to have time to go through this and evaluate. That's the purpose of you being in this today, is to make sure that you are...
Well, it seems like we should've had some input on these numbers, but I can see it's here, I'm getting nowhere with my discussion here, and...
So can he come in?
We're gonna go on.
Anyone that...
Well, this was more than a month ago, can they come in?
Nothing, it's final.
It's nothing final.
This is just a first look.
And you're more than welcome to come in, and I'll sit down and show you all the backup.
Belinda is so sweet, and Belinda is so professional. Belinda is actually handling this with what I call a soft brick, okay? She's telling Don, "All right, come in, we'll go through it." She's telling him, "I'm putting you in your place," but the reality is, we all know, Don isn't gonna show up. But the way that Belinda presents it, you just wanna hug her, you just wanna be like, "I love you, will you be my grandma forever?" And she's just great, she's phenomenal, and Don is not going to show up, though. You know that, I know that. Don's gonna have over a month, every day, that today is the following day of the actual meeting. Do you think he's in town hall right now, going over these numbers and the budget that he said he should have input in? Absolutely not. Do you think he's gonna show up at all? Absolutely not. He's gonna come to the next meeting, and he's just gonna complain again, if he makes it to the next meeting. Again, I'm trying to do everything I can to prove that he is illegally serving on that council, and I'm gonna do whatever I can to get him removed.
Because that's exactly what it's gonna take.
That's not the point of him trying to make, maybe it's false, maybe...
Well, I'm not getting your point. My cause you're saying is, you didn't have enough time, so we're gonna give you time, and you're still over the timer.
No, you're...
No, no, what? That's the way I'm understanding. Okay, that's the way it's coming to me.
That's my neighbor, that is my neighbor. Gail, thank you for standing up, thank you for saying something, thank you for putting him in his place. Oh, you're asking for more time, and we're giving it to you, but now you're upset that you're getting more time, you're upset that you want more time, you're upset that you're getting more time. Gail, thank you. I know, I know, the work that you're doing with Don isn't going to go anywhere with Don, because something's wrong, but thank you. You are my neighbor, and I appreciate you.
Hey, one of these things can be adjusted.
Yeah, the final doesn't come in first, apparently.
And what point do we, uh, we had discussions about these, and it seemed like...
Monday, Friday, 10 to 2.
...made your mind up, you know, without any input from everybody.
The only thing that, Don, tonight's meeting was about the...
Yeah, I understand that.
The trim. So basically, we discussed that we're going with that, the proposed high millage, that's what we're going to spend.
I understand, I understand.
Yes?
It's awful high, we're going much higher than we can go.
Well, if you, we've always, if you look at your past, we have your past history. We've always gone back with the rollback, which is the lowest. So if we go with the proposed rollback rate, it's lower than last year, and we're, instead of $55,000 that we were supposed to get this year, we're gonna walk away with $51.
I hope you caught it, Madam Mayor, when Don goes, "When are we gonna discuss these numbers?" Madam Mayor, in the background, she goes, "Monday through Friday, 10 to 2." Duh! And the beauty of it is, the town residents can come in, Monday through Friday, 10 to 2. This is an open workshop. We can come in, and we can view it. If I wanted to, I could come in, I could record the whole thing. Now, I can't, I can't be a part of the conversation. If the council members are sitting there, working on the budget, and they're going, "Well, this, and this, and this, and this," I don't get to go, "Hey, I don't, I don't, I think you should actually go with this millage rate instead of this millage rate." That's not my, you know, if they invite me to be a part of the conversation, it's different. If I have an expertise, and they go, "Hey, we'd like your counsel on this," but I can sit there and witness all of it. Don should be there. What else is Don doing? Absolutely nothing. And then, Belinda, being the sweetheart she is, she literally fires back at Don and says, "We're gonna charge you less in taxes than you paid last year, under Russ the Suss."
Well, that's not much of a difference there.
But we're losing money, and we're not gaining, so as you can see, the proposed budget for us to operate the town is higher than what the money we have coming in.
According to the new budget, these numbers.
They're not set in stone, but that, I mean, we can't operate on the...
Well, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna argue that point here, because I just don't have no information, but just so you know where I'm coming from, and then we're gonna have, I suppose, work it out.
Work it out? You better believe you've got something to work out. You were just told that the town has more in expenses than income that it brings in. Now, if anybody tries to raise taxes, everybody's like, "Ah!" You can't afford the town that you live in. The town has more expenses than income that it can bring in. What does that mean? It means you're broke. It means you can't carry on. It means the smartest, the best thing the town could do is unincorporate. Now, you go, "Well, back in the day when the town was thriving, incorporating was probably a smart idea." The town's not thriving, these individuals have killed the town. So what does unincorporating look like? Well, it's a vote based on the people, they say, "We don't wanna be a town anymore." And then what happens? We don't wanna be a incorporated town anymore. We're an unincorporated town, just like Golf Hammock right next to him. So then what happens? All right, I made a map, okay? Now, this map is not to scale, it's not real, I have no idea what the actual boundaries of the town of Otter Creek are. So black is the boundaries of Otter Creek, blue is gonna represent roads, okay? So let's say this is the town of Otter Creek, all right? That is the incorporated portion of Otter Creek. Now, you can see, a road can go right through Otter Creek, right through Otter Creek, and inside this boundary, it's incorporated. Outside this boundary, it's not incorporated. Okay, so what difference does it make? This is incorporated, this is not incorporated. Look, look, look right here. You see this house right here? That's a house, right there, inside the town limits, right on this side of the boundary, south of the boundary. They're incorporated. You see the house right next to it, on the other, same road, same road, other side of the boundary. They're unincorporated. What's the difference? The difference is simply this, if the town unincorporates, there is no council. That's the difference. And this person outside of the town boundaries right there, receives services from the county, better services, because the county actually has the money to provide them where the town doesn't. The town is broke, broke. They're never gonna be able to generate enough income to pay all the expenses to run this town, because they've run out, anybody who could actually help with taxes, anybody who could actually build a business, anybody who had any value, they have run out of the town with garbage and drugs, and therefore, they can't even afford to be a town. So, this person here, how does his life change, or her life change, or family life change, if the town is unincorporated? This is how it changes. There's no more monthly meeting with the town council, there's no more Russ the Suss, Ashley being corrupt, there's no more Don the Con arguing about everything, and trying to pretend like he's not corrupt. There's no more Mary, Mary, jail is scary, stealing from the residents. That's the difference. There is no town council. Those individuals voted in the town council no longer have any responsibility, any power whatsoever. The county does the same thing for this person as they do for the other person on the other side of the line. Better services, the county can actually afford to take care of them, whereas the town can't take care of its residents. The smartest thing in the world for the town of Otter Creek is to unincorporate, and let the county take care of everything, because they can afford it, and the only thing that changes in their life? No more town hall meetings.
Yeah, I mean, I'm agreeable to that.
Just for the record, you've had the same opportunity as anyone else to come in and work with us, and you chose not to.
You usually shut around and have a workshop dedicated to the public.
Can I finish?
To come in, absolutely.
So you've had just as much time as anyone, the opportunity to come in and work with this program as anyone else has had, and you come to the meetings, and you create this chaos, just...
I'm not creating any chaos.
And we're gonna do everything to make sure you don't create any more chaos. We're working with the election board, I'm sure the town is working with the state attorney. Once and for all, we're gonna get rid of Don. If it's legal, I have to be very clear, if it's legal, only legal things will be done.
You know, all this disturbance, so you can interrupt this meeting, when it could be a very civil and very calm meeting, if we, yeah, if everyone stepped forward, if you really were that interested, we've had a workshop, ongoing, working on this, we've all discussed it, to be, and it's going on. That's where these things were happening during the weeks, because we don't have time to sit here. We didn't get office until a month ago, we lost three months this year out of the seat, trying to get things called up. That's the reason the workshops are ongoing. Okay, I'm done with that.
Let's count how many people have actually put Don in his place so far. We had Madam Mayor, we had Belinda, we had Gail, we now have Zim, and who's sitting over there saying nothing? That's right, Russ the Suss, he's just conniving, going, "I'm glad it's Don and not me, because I know Jeremy's coming out with a video, please say Don the Con, not Russ the Suss, please be all about Don the Con." No, Russ the Suss, you're the one that put the town in this position.
Thank you. So we're still unanimous, we're going to propose going with the higher millage rate right now.
Right, that's our...
That's done, David.
That's done, David.
The millage.
Is that, that's it for this meeting?
I got the last one, Jeremy.
Russ the Suss, "That's it for this meeting? You mean, you're not gonna talk about me going to jail, the state attorney, all the corrupt things I've done? You're not gonna get into that? I motion we adjourn."
Ball must favor? Unanimous? Have a good evening.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't think of it.
And he wants to say, "I'm disrupting the meeting," and I'm about to guess that.
And if that ain't it, I'll order this key switch from my manager.
Hi, y'all. Have a good night, thank you for coming.
I was gonna, yeah, I know, it was right there. I was hoping it was Sarah.
Hi.
Only inside.
In just a couple more weeks, George and I are jumping on a plane, headed down for the August meeting. Stay tuned to find out, will Don the Con even legally be allowed to sit in a seat, or Russ the Suss, because neither of them belong in those positions.